Good evening and welcome to the regular town council meeting, July 2nd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and roll call, please.
Chair President Phillips.
Present.
Councilwoman Sims.
Present.
Councilwoman Wilder-Cross.
Present.
Councilwoman Pratt.
Present.
Councilwoman Gannon.
Councilwoman Lavoie.
Present.
Councilwoman Segal.
Present.
We'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes of the June 4th regular town council meeting. Is there a motion?
移到 Moved.
By Councilwoman Pratt, second. Second by Councilwoman Segal. And I would like to make an amendment to add to the minutes, to say that after one of the speakers spoke, Charlie Hamlin spoke, there was an ask for their hands to be raised in support of what he had discussed, and I counted eighteen members. I don't know if anybody else has any different numbers, so just to reflect that, it says that eighteen members of the audience raise their hand in support of Charlie's comments, please. Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilwoman Sims. All those in favor of the amended item? Thank you. And now we vote on the minutes as amended, correct?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor? Six yeas.
Five yeas, one abstention.
Oh, yep. Oh, sorry, I'm Rob.
Oh, sorry, didn't mean to correct you.
Now, we're going to move on to open public communications. This is time for anyone from the public who'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, and we'll give you three minutes. Just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ian Kennedy, Laurel Pines Drive. I would like to respond to something said at the very end of open public communications in the June 4th town council meeting regarding speaking in opposition now to the Gorham Connector. Quote, "Something that has been planned for thirty years and no one has been to meetings during that time to voice their opinion," end quote. As I mentioned in last month's meeting, I have lived in Gorham since 1992, have been an involved resident and watched town council and school committee meetings when GoCat went again, and also read every page of the Gorham Times. In all my years here, the bypass is a memorable topic, but the Gorham Connector does not bubble to the surface from the past. Topics that are concepts and are being studied are put to one side and thought until there is more information to form a knowledgeable opinion. In the meantime, people live their busy lives of raising children, going to a job or two, taking care of elderly parents, or taking care of their own medical issues. For the first time this past spring, the Main Turnpike Authority revealed to the public maps and plans, and with that, citizens had actual details to respond, as we are now, to concrete information, literally. My daughter, who was at last month's meeting and is at tonight's meeting, was only three years old thirty years ago. However, as an adult returning home from New York City, she is here now and listening to the conversation. For the past six years, cars in New York City were not practical or affordable for her. The options for getting from point A to point B were subway, bus, ferry, walking, and rail. I would love to see more rail options available here. Rail would fit holistically and organically within the area, preserving the character of a historically farming community. In the minutes of the March 16th, 2010 advisory committee meeting, there was concern over the Gorham East-West corridor feasibility studies, perceived lack of focus on trains as the primary transportation within the region. Rails and buses give proper consideration to those who cannot afford cars these days or are not able to drive. Year to year, communities evolve, the needs and wants and priorities of citizens evolve, and with that, ideas and concepts should evolve. In the past thirty years, people have moved into and out of Gorham. There are new people who have not read the reams of studies and meeting minutes within three decades. They might not even know that they exist, so it should not matter when citizens join in on the conversation. The challenge today goes beyond the concept of a connector, the challenges within connecting with the people, with the public today, as to how they envision their community going forward. In reading the minutes of the regular town council meeting of December 7th, 2021, and a special town council meeting of January 18th, 2022, considering accepting a memorandum of agreement for the Gorham Connector, I was surprised to see that there was no public hearing before the proposed order and the signing of an agreement. We need to hear what the current residents think about the Gorham Connector. It is not too late to be heard. It is not too late to join in in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kathy Hamlin, 263 Libby Avenue. Thank you for the amendment to the minutes. You took half of what I was going to say away, so now I don't have to speed talk. As we have shared, as was shared at the last meeting, there's a group of citizens that have come together to share their ongoing concerns about safety to residents from the quarry brickyard. Charlie Hamlin came with a few suggestions for consideration, and we have invited councilors to talk with us, which a couple did come and listen. Thank you. It is an area that we are certainly not experts in, and we've learned that no one in our town offices is either, but we hope to continue to learn from each other and hope to find ways to mitigate the safety concerns and living conditions of Gorham residents. One councillor has suggested that this could be a group going after the bypass by targeting local quarries in an attempt to stop the sourcing of aggregate for the spur, thus driving up the price and making the spur more difficult to complete. He shared that he found this to be economic terrorism of a local business. Really? We're possible terrorists now? All we are are residents with a shared concern, trying to find their way through a political maze in regards to a matter that is business for you and personal to us. While there may be a few that want to make that connection to the bypass, please be assured that majority of the residents we're talking with don't want to stop Shaw's business, nor do we think we'd have that kind of ability to do so. We have many family, neighbors, and friends that work there, and Shaw's is a large part of our community. We are just hoping that at this point, to keep the quarry from expanding and affecting more residents' safety and living conditions. And we would like to make sure that the town is doing due diligence by its residents and overseeing that safety practices are consistently done. Again, we hope to have continued discussions with you all, as well as with the town manager, to continue to learn and share ideas. We all hope that you will be open to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Ken Curtis, 118 South Street. Been here since 1968, fifty-three-year taxpayer. Anyway, I have a couple of things. The recount of the school budget ballots seems to have degenerated into a Republican versus a Democrat position. I did circulate a petition. I never asked anyone what their political party was. I was concerned, as I asked them, if they wanted to request a recount because their budget only passed by four votes. And they were concerned by the large increases in taxes each year and driven by the school committee budget mostly. Most taxpayers are also concerned that council members are not being diligent in their duty to all taxpayers. What I hear from neighbors and others around town, the council is either in league with the school committee, or they're just not asking the right questions and are taking the information they get from the school committee. It's difficult for many of us to see the justification for a nine percent increase each year, maybe more, as opposed to the other town department budgets, more modest increase. This recount was a call for the council to be what the taxpayers have elected them to be, good stewards of our taxes. The council chair said, "Let the voters decide," and that can be a rallying cry to the voters of Gorham for more than just the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melanie Bennett from 87 Buck Street. I've lived here since the second grade, and I went to school in Gorham, and I had a great experience. I just would like it to be cohesive again, like it was for me. So I'm here to, basically, you all voted six to zero in favor, where do I put the, for adding $3.5 million to our citizens' tax burden. The budget only passed by two votes. This clearly doesn't represent the taxpayers of Gorham. Many didn't want it. I thought you were supposed to be listening to us and getting a feel of, like, what the citizens want, because we're all out here working every day, and we put you here so that we can work and give you our money so you can spend it all. And there's a lot of us that are getting really frustrated. The increase that took place last year was embarrassing, having to vote three times because, you know, nobody, because it was the first time that the citizens decided that the budget wasn't going to pass. And it's, then the recount, I have some issues with the recount. So it passed, so the budget passed by four votes. So we tried to do the application, and the application was a mess. We had five days to get a hundred signatures. We got 260 signatures. So that wasn't the problem, but the application itself, we were put through some stuff, and we don't have a lawyer, like you do. We had to be spoken down to by your lawyer, who we pay for, and I didn't appreciate that. And I'm starting to see how this all works, and it makes me very angry. And the town lawyer is clearly not for the citizens of Gorham. The town lawyer is for only the one side that you're all sitting on, and we have no representation. And I'm trying to figure out how that works. So I do have an appointment, or I called to get an appointment with the town manager, because I want everybody to be clear that this application process was convoluted and made to be difficult for us, and it didn't need to be. And there are no rules, and that's what the lawyer was using against us, was that you are making up your own rules for the application, and then we would ask that certain things would happen, and then we got here and it didn't happen because he changed it in between. And I don't like that kind of stuff, and we pay for, we, I think.
Ms. Bennet?
We pay.
Ms. Bennet, could you finish up your comments?
Yep. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Abby King from Winter Green Drive. Thank you so much for all you do. You've heard from me a few times about the Main Turnpike Authority's proposed project, so tonight I won't share any of my own thoughts with you. I'm just here to present the petition that has been circulating against this project that has so far been signed by 15,656 individuals, the vast majority of whom are Mainers, 1,114, I just added three today, residents of Gorham, so over 1,100 residents of Gorham, and over 100 affiliated businesses, groups, and organizations. Over 6,000 of those people that signed the petition wrote in to add additional reasons that they're opposed to the turnpike expansion to Gorham, so I'll share a few with you in my remaining time. And all of the messages that I'm sharing came from Gorham residents. Quote, "This is not needed. Having a superhighway leading into Gorham will just cause more congestion in town. I am opposed to the high cost, the misuse of land, public or private. Money could be used to improve current roadways," and on and on and on. "It's just a bad choice all around. This plan development is illogical and shortsighted. It is not in line with the needs of the community in the slightest. It will create more traffic, place a heavier burden on taxpayers, damage the ecosystem that we are all so proud of, and substantially injure a working family farm that has endured for thirteen generations. Additionally, enacting eminent domain in this case sets a dangerous precedent that the state of Maine can seize working farmland, one of our most precious resources, for the sake of an expensive invasive project that the people it is supposed to serve are opposed to while touting outdated studies and surveys as justification." Quote, "As a family of commuters who regularly travel during rush hours from Gorham to Portland and home again, we don't support the creation of this highway extension as the solution to local traffic issues. We would gladly sit in traffic for a little while or take longer and smaller alternative routes in order to keep Smiling Hill Farm intact for our children and grandchildren who go there regularly. Please bring local people who live here now into a solutions-based conversation to talk about ways we could reduce traffic impact and also preserve farm and wild spaces. Don't just rush ahead and create a very expensive highway extension that none of the taxpayers want." The list of folks from Gorham that signed the petition came out to forty-eight pages, which was more than my printer could handle today, so I will email that list into the town manager tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben Wallace, 781 County Road. First of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to come up here and talk to you guys this evening. I am an eleventh-generation farmer here at Smiling Hill Farm, and I am talking to you to try to save our farm today. Our farm has been in our family since 1720. That's over 304 years. I mean, to put that in perspective, our nation is celebrating a birthday in a couple of days, and that is turning 248 years old. And having this bypass will definitely ruin our farm. My daughter works at this farm and want to keep this farm in our family forever, and what I'm asking you today is to take a look at that MOA that you guys signed in 2022 and rescind that MOA. And the reason I say that is, if you could look at Page 3, Paragraph 5, it states that you would avoid farms and historical sites. And I feel our farm is a farm, and it's very historical as well. I mean, it is a landmark here, I think, for Southern Maine. You ask people around here, Smiling Hill Farm, people are well aware of it. I mean, this is a farm that is open for families, and they bring their kids there. You know, we go and enjoy, you know, ice cream and have times up at the animals, and by putting in a bypass with a four-lane highway going through our farm, definitely is not going to be the same for everybody else in the future. So I'm asking you all here today again to rescind that MOA and tell the Main Turnpike Authority, "We do not want to have this Gorham Connector going through this area." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I get started, can you explain to me your little traffic light over there?
Yep, this is just to tell us, there's a three-minute time limit. Yep, so when it's blinking yellow, it's telling you to wrap up your comments, and when it's red, it's been three minutes. That's what it's for.
Is yellow, like, 30 seconds left?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I think most of you know why I'm here. My name's Sam. I'm at 114 South Street, and as some of my other speakers pointed out, Mr. Curtis and Mrs. Bennet, Gorham has a bit of a revenue crunch, and this is a gentle reminder that the Main Turnpike Authority does not pay property taxes. So any highway that gets built is going to be put onto land that was paying property taxes and then will not be, which I think is something that, as current events have shown, is not something that Gorham can afford for the promise of future revenues of pie-in-the-sky businesses moving in. So I strongly urge the council to consider, as my other speaker is doing, Mr. Wallace, of rescinding their MOA from 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Donnis Moody Roberts. I live at 38 County Road in North Scarborough. So a couple of things that I want to focus on, spoken a couple times now. But the first was, I wanted to respond to a comment that was made last council session about how one of the council members wished that there'd been more discussion several years ago, and I want to say that that's a good point, and if there's any silver lining in this, I swear that I will be more engaged publicly. But I also wanted to say that back then, it was purely a hypothetical, and when you have, when you have a hypothetical and you say it's, you gloss over every negative about it, when you say that it's going to avoid farmland, when it's going to avoid environmental impact, and you exaggerate the positives, then you should expect, when the actual proposal is on the table, that there would be opposition to it. I also want to say that there's an advisory committee that was formed in that MOA that you signed, an advisory committee of the municipalities, MDOT, and MTA. And that advisory committee, which should be a public proceeding, has never, since it was formed in 2022, ever been listed publicly on any municipal website, on the MTA's website, on MDOT's website, or anywhere where we could find it. And in passing, last week, I heard through a slip of a tongue that that municipal meeting was occurring, that advisory committee meeting was occurring at the MTA headquarters, and I went, and the MTA lawyer came down and denied me access to that meeting, and he has still not written why that occurred. But I just want to point out that there is a lack of transparency and a lack of trying to have a proper engagement with the community. Running out of time, so I just want to say, I just passed out what's Maine Sensible Transportation Act, which states, "It is the policy of the state that transportation planning decisions, capital investment decisions, and project decisions must require that the full range of reasonable transportation alternatives be evaluated for all significant highway construction or reconstruction projects, and give preference to transportation system management options, demand management strategies, improvements to the existing system, and other transportation modes before increasing highway capacity through road building activities." And I know there's more that we can do to fix the less-than-a-mile stretch of overlap where the traffic backup occurs. That's the bottleneck. 11422 on their own are perfectly fine capacity-wise. It's when they combine, that's the one stretch we need to address, and there's a 66-foot right away there. So you can do some limited widening and intersection improvements. And just for us as landowners, I would hope that, as a community, we would try that first before we would go through such a destructive measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right, we will move on to council communications, and I will start with Councilwoman Wilder-Cross.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I'm going to be short tonight. I want to say congratulations to the Baxter Library staff, the rec. department, the volunteers at the library, the police, the fire department, the rescue, and all of the volunteer cooks who came out for another successful spring into summer celebration. I'm told that there were so many snow cones made that they couldn't count them, bags of popcorn, cups of lemonade, and more than 400 hot dogs were consumed. I think that's amazing, and I want to encourage my fellow councilors to volunteer next year to cook. It's really fun. The snow cone stuff is sticky, but the hot dogs, it's really fun to do. So sign up next year. They need you. At the monthly SIPs Economic Development Committee meeting on June 18th, we continued our discussion mostly about town-owned properties where we might consider schools. We need to figure out for the future what we're going to do about that. We're actually going to reference some of that discussion tonight during our regular meeting. The next committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 28th, and it's 11 o'clock in the morning in the meeting room. I want to say thank you to the Gorham Village Alliance for hosting a very successful, well-attended Business After Hours event last week. The enthusiasm for this kind of event really shows us how important it is for our economic development, and I'm hoping that we'll see this happen on a regular basis. And I'll just end with a quick note about New Year Gorham. I know it is six months away, but six months goes fast, and we have been meeting, and one of the announcements that we've made is that we are going to have something different this year. Instead of fireworks that upset some dogs and people who are affected by sensitivity to noise, we're going to have an inside music, laser light show. It is promised to be spectacular, so just mark your calendars. You don't want to miss something like that. It's the first time in town. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pratt?
All right. First off, I want to thank Lori and crew for the recount process. It was a daunting task, and I think it was handled very well and very efficiently, and I also wanted to thank all the volunteers that stepped up to count and recount and count again and scan and do all the fun stuff. So thank you. And then, lastly, like always, please donate blood. Blood banks are critically low. I see Councilor Kush, former Councilor Kush, pointing at her arm, so she just donated. Thank you very much. This month only, if you donate in July, you could possibly win a 2025 Dodge Ram pickup, actually. So little incentive. Go get a needle put in your arm in a good way, people, please.
How often can you go in a month?
Only once, unfortunately, but please, please, please donate. Again, critically low, and really would like to see the blood banks get to where they need to be. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sims?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank Lori and the town clerk's office and the team for the recount. Obviously, that's a lot of work to have to do, and while I'm sure it wasn't completely perfect, you know, from everyone's perspective, I think you did the best job you could, and I think it was well done, and we're doing the best we can to, you know, have everyone in the town feel confident in the institution, and that's really important. I also want to thank the members of our newly organized Fiscal Sustainability Committee. They're volunteering their time on a monthly basis. We had our third meeting in June. Our next meeting is August 26th. The meetings have been informative, and they've already generated some excellent discussion around how we can chart a better path forward for our town. And there's a number of different community members, parents, business owners, town staff, elected officials. They're all working, they're all putting their time to develop a deeper understanding of our budget math here in Gorham, which is challenging, and there's a number of factors that continue driving those numbers up. All of this information is available to the public through the town website, and I encourage residents to follow the work and educate themselves as much as they can. I know there's a lot of information to try to keep track of, so I do think the committee is helping kind of try to, you know, pare it down in a way that's more digestible, and I, you know, I recognize the budget challenges as well. We have to get creative, and we have to question how we've ended up in the place we currently are and what we can do differently to produce a different result, because the path we're on is not sustainable, as the community members have come up and stated tonight. So, you know, we're going to keep doing that work in the Fiscal Sustainability Committee, and, you know, and hopefully that will continue to produce some positive results. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lavoie?
Not much to report, other than that the Open Space and Trails Master Plan Steering Committee did meet, and we had initial discussions, and we were tasked with kind of scoring a list of seven vendors that put out an RFP, which is a request for proposal, to write the plan. I read through all those documents, lots of reading, lots of, it was a challenging task to rank these companies, but it's in the works, so I wanted the public to know that, and also I just wanted to apologize for not being here last month. One of my goals for my three-year term was not to miss a single meeting, but unfortunately, we had some family circumstances come up, and I couldn't be here. So that's it.
Councilwoman Segal?
Thank you very much. I would like to congratulate the Pride Committee for putting on a fantastic Gorham Pride I would like to congratulate the Pride Committee for putting on a fantastic Gorham Pride. It was an amazing event. It was, and it was very chill. It was really... Portland is big, exciting, loud. I was very impressed with how Gorham has a real chill character. And so it was wonderful. Everyone involved did a great job. The ordinance committee met this month, as we do every month, and we discussed parking. We discussed building heights and setbacks. And that's actually where we got to, because they were long conversations. We are meeting again at 10:00 a.m. on July 25th, which is the fourth Thursday, July 25th, at 10:00 a.m. in Conference Room A here. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Lori. I think I sent her an email, but the election workers and the staff, the town manager and I were here during the recount, observing the process, and it really went smoothly. And I've got a lot of feedback from people saying that they were sitting at a table opposite someone that had an opposing viewpoint, but they ended up chatting, talking. I think the town manager will agree that we saw people, you know, telling stories, laughing, and things like that. So it was really good to see and to have people have those conversations. I also want to remind people that the Cherry Hill Farmers Market is on Wednesday, out in front of Cherry Hill by Sebago Brewing on Main Street, on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 6:00 until September. And then if people do read the Gorham Times Town Council Report, I would encourage you to read our Town Council Minutes instead. There were several different errors and things that we had voted on, so I encourage people to check the town website for things like that, because I don't think that Councilor Sims presented a petition or anything.
I don't recall doing it.
Okay, so just making sure.
Check the tape.
Yeah, there were just a few things in there, so I encourage people to, you know, keep track of our minutes through the town website. Other than that, that's all I have.
Does sound like something I might do, though.
Yeah, yeah. I believe it was actually someone who spoke earlier that had brought the information to us, but... So town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Echoing the comments, I want to thank Lori and her staff, as well as everyone who participated in the recount. I think to the chair's point, when you put people in a room, not on social media, it's amazing everyone can talk to each other and kind of get along. So thanks again to Lori and her staff for that. The only item I had this evening, because Monday morning I'll have a ton of messages on this, is fireworks. Please respect your neighbors, your neighbor's property. And reminder that a permit is required for fireworks in Gorham. It can be found with the appropriate information on when you can shoot them off on the Fire Department's website. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, and now the school committee chair, Sarah Perkins.
So there's actually a lot going on in the schools, even though it's summer, but I chose to focus my report on many of the comments that were said earlier and also echoed by the committee, the council. So to start off on the budget, the Gorham School Committee would like to take a moment to thank everyone who voted on the budget validation referendum on June 11th. Secondly, we'd like to publicly thank Lori and her team for putting together an incredibly thorough process for the budget recount and taking the time needed to make sure the vote was 100% accurate. Although the school committee is pleased with the outcome, as we know, this budget represents what our students need for the coming year, we also know that the closeness of the vote tells us that as a community, we still have work to do to try to find creative ways to lower costs and stretch revenue streams in order to take as much pressure off our taxpayers as possible moving forward. That leads me to my second topic, which Councilor Sims touched on earlier, the Fiscal Sustainability Committee. One way our town is working together to try to accomplish this task moving forward is through the Gorham Joint Fiscal Sustainability Committee. This joint committee was created by both the Town Council and Gorham School Committee earlier this past winter. Its purpose is to understand the existing financial landscape for the town of Gorham and the Gorham School Department, to evaluate the future financial landscape, and to use this knowledge to make recommendations for how to maintain sustainable taxes while continuing to manage the present and future growth of our community over the next five to 10 years. The committee has met two times now, and will be meeting for a third time on August 26th at 6:00 p.m. here in the conference room. It's slated to continue to meet through the fall and winter of this year and come up with published recommendations to be shared with both the Town Council and the school committee for how to move forward. The specific deliverables of this committee, there are three. One, to develop a series of recommendations to the Town Council and school committee for how to reduce costs or mitigate continued cost increases. Number two, develop a series of recommendations to the Town Council and school committee for how to increase revenues that will offset direct taxpayer expenses. And number three, to develop a series of recommendations to the Town Council and school committee for how to improve communications between various stakeholder groups within the community of Gorham to aid in understanding current and future financial limitations moving forward. This has obviously been a hot topic on social media and in real life over the past several months and years, and I would encourage anyone with an interest in this topic to please, please, please attend these meetings, reach out, share your ideas. Again, August 26th, 6:00 p.m. It's a two-hour meeting here in the conference room on the first floor. In addition, you can also find all meeting agendas, minutes, information, source materials on the town of Gorham's website. Just look under Boards and Committees, and it's right there. So I strongly, strongly encourage people to get involved in this. This is, again, looking at the next five to 10 years of managing growth in our community. As always, feel free to reach out with any questions. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing number one on item 2024-7-1. Public hearing to hear comment on comments on a proposal to amend the Land Use and Development Code to add the new zoning districts into the Establishment of Zones section in Chapter 1, Section 1-1, and add the new districts to Chapter 2, Section 2-3-G permitted non-residential signs administered, sponsored.
All right, public hearing number one is now open. If anyone wants to speak on this item, please feel free to come to the podium. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed.
Proposed Order 2494, order that the Town Council amend the Land Use and Development Code to add the new zoning districts into the Establishment of Zones section in Chapter 1, Section 1-1, and add the new districts to Chapter 2, Section 2-3-G permitted non-residential signs as follows.
Councilor Chair.
Yes.
Motion to waive the reading due to the length.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wilder-Cross. All those in favor of waiving the reading? Six ayes. All right, I'm going to look to the town manager for this. Give us a little explanation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I may just call on the Community Development Director. Basically, this entire agenda relates to community development. I don't think there's one item that doesn't, but Tom can give you a very quick rundown on this item.
Good evening, everybody. This one's pretty easy. So with all the zoning changes we have been doing and adding the new zoning districts per the comm plan, we realized we hadn't updated the sign ordinance, so this is just getting those new districts in a sign regulation, so businesses can have a signage. So this is just cleaning up loose ends.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion on the item? All right. Is there a second? Councilor Pratt. All right. Any discussion?
So no changes to the actual regulations on signs, it's just putting them in the correct zones?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Six ayes.
Public hearing number two on item 2023-9-16. Public hearing to hear comments on a proposal to amend the Land Use and Development Code to allow the Planning Board to acquire design modifications to private ways administered, sponsored.
All right, public hearing number two is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, public hearing... Oops, sorry. Public hearings closed.
Proposed Order 2495, order that the Town Council amend the Land Use and Development Code to allow the Planning Board to require design modifications to private ways as follows. Overview: Town staff have been asked to review road standards for the town of Gorham. This review includes both design standards and application of the waivers. Land Use and Development Code amendments update paved private way standards to include developments between 10 and 25 lots, change 25-lot dwelling units to 11- to 25-lot dwelling units, minimum centerline radius, reduce minimum centerline radius of 11- to 25-lot standards to 150 feet, which align with urban and rural access standards for public streets, minimum tangent between curves and reverse alignment, reduce the minimum tangent between curves of all paved private ways to 100 feet. The average household generates less than 10 trips per day. FHA 2010 status of the nation's highways, bridges, and transit, conditions and performances. And a development less than equal to 25 lots would have an average daily traffic of less than 250 vehicles per day. Therefore, the paved private way standards should more closely align with the urban and rural access standards for public ways. Update private ways typical dwellings, standardize all typical section dwellings to reflect private road standard tables. Update Land Use and Development Code, update Section 2-5 and the Land Use Development Code as follows. 2-5, private ways shall be designed to meet the following requirements. Private ways shall meet the standards presented in Tables 2 and 3 and the typical cross-section depict in Figures 9 and 10 unless otherwise agreed to and permitted in writing by the Planning Board. The Planning Board may require design modifications if it finds special provisions to be necessary to protect the public health and safety as a result of specific development proposal. Private ways will not cause congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to use of the highways or public roads existing or proposed on or off the site.
Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Councilor Wilder-Cross. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Lavoie. All right, back to you, Tom.
So that was a lot of detail by Lori, but so tonight, the only change is that red language. So what we're reviewing is just giving waiver provisions to the Planning Board. So on private ways, we're allowing the flexibility that we do for public roads on private ways. It was missed, so that language is just being proposed to be... It's just a waiver provision that where the town engineers come into the Planning Board to recommend whether design modifications can happen due to certain situations, then the Planning Board gives that flexibility. So that's what we're doing tonight.
All right. Any questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor? Six ayes.
Public hearing number three on 2024-7-2. Public hearing to hear comment on a proposal to amend the Land Use and Development Code to allow mobile vending unit exemptions for agritourism events administered, sponsored.
All right, public hearing number three is now open. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed.
Proposed Order 24-96, order that the Town Council amend the Land Use and Development Code to allow mobile vending unit exemptions for agritourism events as follows. Land Use and Development Code amendments, Chapter 2, Performance Standards, Section 2-16, Mobile Vending Units. Mobile vending units at town-sponsored events are subject to the requirements under this ordinance but are required to have a vitriol's license. Mobile vending units at agritourism activities are allowed in activities meeting the standards outlined in Chapter 1, Section 1-8, Rural Districts, G Performance Standards for agritourism activity. Any property may have a mobile vending unit subject to the following requirements. The mobile vending unit must meet the requirements of this section. Each property is limited to a one-day exemption per calendar year.
Is there a motion?
I move.
A motion by Councilor Lavoie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Pratt. All right.
Good evening again. So if the council members, we have a performance standards for mobile vending units, and really that's specifically tied to a mobile vending unit located on one side over and over, like on the one on Lower Main Street over by Beal's Ice Cream. So we have certain requirements. It was clear that we needed to do an exemption for agritourism, like apple picking or something, where they wanted to have a food truck to support whatever the event they were having. We needed to do waiver requirements. So we've identified that waiver requirement under that performance standard, so they don't have to get a permit through the code officer. It's just an allowed use. They will need to get a vitriol's license, just like all mobile vending units that locate in the town, so.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead, Councilor Siegel.
If I may through to the committee director, what about the change about the town property being subject to this?
Say that again?
In the six A exemptions, for it says mobile vending units at town-sponsored events, it said not subjected, and it's being changed to are subject to the requirements.
No, are not. Are not subject.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ignore, ignore.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Six ayes.
Public hearing number four on item 2021-9-11. Public hearing to hear comments on a proposal to amend the Land Use and Development Code to allow for unit bonuses for affordable housing in the town's growth areas as required by 30A MRS-A 4364, also known as LD 2003 administered, sponsored.
All right, public hearing number four is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, seeing no one, the public hearings closed.
Proposed Order 24-97, order that the Town Council amend the Land Use and Development Code to allow for unit bonuses for affordable housing in the town's growth areas as required by 30A MRS-A 4364, also known as LD 2003, as follows.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to waive the reading due to length.
Okay, I was looking that way.
I know you were. I forget I threw it all out.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Councilor Lavoie is going to second that. All right, all those in favor of waiving the reading? Okay, six ayes. And a motion on the item, please.
So moved.
All right, second by Councilor Sims.
Do you actually have a question?
Yep. Do you want... Tell him to talk first?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good evening again. So I think the order says it all, but state statute, LD 2003, identified certain changes that the town of Gorham needed to make regarding a number of developments. One of them, affordable housing. The other one was accessory dwelling units. We had worked through the accessory dwelling units a while ago. This was the last item that needed to be accomplished to meet the LD 2003. So really, what it says in our growth districts that allow, we had to allow a density bonus for affordable housing developments, and then this is the requirements under state statute for us to meet that. And I'd answer any questions. And there's a map included showing our growth districts that this would apply to, and I'd answer any questions the committee has.
Councilor Sims, go ahead.
I do have a couple of questions, but, and Tom, we considered this an ordinance committee, and then did it go to the Planning Board? Were there other steps in the process?
Yeah, it went to the ordinance committee first, and then it went on to Planning Board for public hearing, and then back to council.
And did we get any public comment on it at the Planning Board? Did the Planning Board have any input, or?
They listened to it. They identified that, I believe it was the requirement on the state laws, so they didn't feel the need to change anything, so.
Yeah. The one other question I do have is, you know, one of the questions that came up, I think it might have been Councilor Gagnon that mentioned it first, the ordinance committee meeting, was some question around whether each of the highlighted areas, you know, are the most sensible places to try to be fostering more development? And I think it's a little bit confusing, because like the White Rock area up in the far north and the far west area as well, the base density there is not as high as in the village. Is that accurate to say? So even though it's a multiple of the base density, it's not as high as in the village. Is that true?
Correct.
Yeah. That's a helpful clarification. I do just generally, you know, I'd like to, I think the process of trying to, like, if we were to say we wanted to do this, but we wanted to, like, remove one or two of the highlighted areas, we can't do that, because those areas are already identified as growth areas in the comprehensive plan currently. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yeah. So I, you know, for the next iteration of the comprehensive plan, I do think we need to question whether it makes sense to try to, you know, encourage more growth on that very furthest edges of the town. You know, one of the things we're starting to talk about in the Fiscal Sustainability Committee is, the further spread out we are, the more of the roads we have to maintain, the further the school buses have to drive. Basically, just everything is more expensive the more spread out we are. So we really have to try to figure out ways to, you know, enable, you know, incrementally more growth in the areas where we've got the infrastructure, which to a large extent is the highlighted area in and or surrounding the village. But given the fact that we can't change this map tonight, I'm willing to support it as is.
Councilor Lavoie.
I don't disagree with Councilor Sims in what he's saying, but I think when I look at this map and those growth areas that are on the far edges of our town boundaries are also adjacent to growth areas in surrounding communities, so it makes sense to me.
Councilor Pratt.
I'm going to have to tastefully disagree. Hear me out here, okay? So West Gorham, we've sponsored three items now to say we're going to preserve rural farmland in town. You're taking one of the biggest chunks of rural farmland in town and saying that you want to make a density at this. want to make a density at this point. No water, no gas, no sewer, never will be, never, not while we're alive, not while my kids are alive, not while their kids are alive, will there ever be water, sewer, or gas out there? North Gorham, same thing. So for me, I don't disagree. This is, this is the map and this is what it's supposed to be, right? And this is what we say it's supposed to be, but I'd table it tonight, honestly. I don't see the point even doing this. I, I get we have to meet LD two thousand and three, but is there a penalty for not meeting it? I haven't heard any timeline on it.
I think the legal risk of not moving forward with it is if a developer wants to come in and get the affordable housing units that are required, then the town is at legal risk to be challenged by the developer and lose that argument.
Oh, we're just greenlighting them.
And just to play out that scenario, I mean, cynically, it's adding more cost to developer to take that route, which they would likely be, less likely to do.
Right.
So.
I, I think like, here's a recommendation for the council. You could like move forward with the affordable housing units, identifying the areas that you agree to, and then if you want to remove, again, there's legal risk in North Gorham and West Gorham because under the definition of the statute, those need to be included as part of that affordable housing density. You could target to remove those, but if a developer moves forward in that area, what I would recommend is that you would go through an amendment process to add it at that point.
Could you, could you explain that one more time? Sorry, the amendment process aspect of it?
So if we have a developer coming in that wants to use affordable housing units and you have taken away North Gorham and West, in those areas and said, we're not going to include them, but a developer comes in and says, look, I know I, I want to do affordable units, I want to locate it here, I know I'm allowed this density even though you're saying I don't, I want to utilize that density. We could work with them to go through a zoning amendment process with the council to add that, but there is time and delay in it, and I don't know what.
I keep forgetting, with the two and a half times density, do you round up or down?
You would, you can't have like a half unit, so you would round down.
You do round down. Okay. So we're talking about these areas here. That would be, it's normally sixty thousand square feet in the rural for one unit right now. This would give them two units for sixty thousand square feet, so long as one of those units is affordable? I don't even, I think if we pass, it's not a single, not a single person's going to even consider doing that in, in our rural areas regardless. Like I'm totally on board to change the growth areas for our next comprehensive plan to remove these, but I am absolutely not concerned about that actually happening.
But I, I hear that, but just a clarifying point, I do think that while the majority of that area is in the rural zone, Tom, you could probably give us, you've got the zoning map memorized better than any of us. I do believe there's some, there's some parts of the very western corner, the very northern corner up in there, some of those are higher density areas, yeah? There's own.
Yeah, those are, if they're highlighted, they're suburban residential, they're not rural, so those areas, or roadside commercial, so those areas in the West Gorham and then North Park, I think those are technically suburban residential zones. So they do have a sixty thousand, but if water was brought in from Standish, there, you could get a little bit tighter density than that.
If water was brought in from Standish? Come on. Come on.
There's public water on twenty five in Standish, probably, I don't know how many, probably four hundred.
Is it like where the Hannaford is? That's where the water is?
Yeah, it's closer than that. I can't remember how close the town line is.
Oh, is it? Interesting.
To Counselor Pratt's point, I don't, I'm really, really, really not concerned about this. I mean, honestly, I'd be willing to bet nobody does it until by the time we put on the comprehensive plan and then remove these from the growth areas. I just, I think it's a non-issue.
I think the town manager wanted to chime in. He looks like he.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to Tom's point, so depending on what direction the council wants to go this evening, if you wish to amend this map, which is based on our growth zones as outlined in the comp plan and in the state statute, there are ways to mitigate that risk to the town in the future. Just understand that the town will, may have to amend this map again if challenged. Or that being said, if you want to leave it the way it is and go forward, see what happens and amend it at a later date if there's an issue, but I think you have different avenues that you could, you could look at.
Councilor Wilder Cross, do you have a question?
Yeah, I think I do. So if the comprehensive plan, when it gets revised, changes how these areas are structured, then can the state override that and decide that, oh, no, no, these, these are okay for us to build higher density?
Thank you. And Tom corrected me if I'm wrong, well, the state can override us at any point. That's what the state does, and the state has done very well in the last couple of years. But that, to your point about the zones, LD two thousand and three highlights the growth zones as it pertains to this. So if they were no longer growth zones as outlined in our comprehensive plan, or modified or reduced, or the footprint was different, this would have to be changed as well, or likely would be changed as well to comply with that, assuming the state law does not change.
Okay.
I think there still will be a push in the future, and Tom could probably speak to this, of the state trying to find ways to incentivize housing. Obviously, when you apply it to a statewide model, it doesn't work for every community, and that's probably what we've been seeing in a lot of towns, but.
Okay, thank you. I think.
Any other questions or comments? I think that, for me, I'd like to start off with removing those two and just leave it at that, but the rest of the council has kind of spoken, so we can just leave it as is. All right.
Well, I mean, should we? It seems like some of us have some interest in doing that. I mean, I don't know if I don't want to make like a, you know, just a split second decision here necessarily. It might be better to, I don't know what additional information we might be able to get to make a more informed decision, but Lee, I mean, Councilor Pratt mentioned potentially tabling it, and we could think, you know, just give us a little more time to consider it. I don't know if that might be, might be worth doing.
Yeah, I was going to say, if the council wants to table it, it would be for more information or more time to consider the item, but that's up to anyone who wants to make a motion for that.
But it would take changing the comp plan to ultimately make a difference. So whether we keep it on here or take it off and add it later, because the state's forcing us to. Splitting hairs, I mean, or that's the wrong expression, but it doesn't matter what we do, it's going to lead to the same result, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I would, whether it's tabled, modified, or approved as is, I would not recommend not doing anything because you don't want to be the first person that just says, no, we're not going to do it. Later, maybe you can push the issue, and if it's okay, Tom has something to add to that as well. Thank you.
My recommendation, if you have no concern with the language and you have no concern with the center in the Little Falls area, moving forward with that and then sending those two other areas that you, that you just want more in-depth review of, send to the ordinance committee. So just to have one more look at it to see whether those can include it or not, the ordinance committee can do a more deep dive on it and then report back to the full council.
It works for me.
I'm good with that.
Seems reasonable.
Okay. Does anyone want to make that motion? I will make that motion.
And as Tom just said.
And as Tom just said. Can you get that, Lori? Is there a second for the amendment?
Yeah.
It's Councilor Sims. All right.
Chair, can the amendment be clearly recited?
Yeah. So we're gonna, we're proposing, we're admitting it to move forward today with the map, with portions of the map.
Excluding North Gorham and West Gorham.
Excluding North Gorham and West Gorham. Those two areas will be tabled for further consideration by the ordinance committee.
Yeah, they'll be sent to the ordinance committee for discussion.
Question on that is, the area by Daniel Street, is that included in the North Gorham? Okay. West Gorham. West Gorham.
Yep. Ready to vote on the amendment? Any, all right, all those in favor of the amendment? All right, six yeas. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Six yeas.
Public hearing number five on item 2024 seven dash three. Public hearing to hear comment on a proposal to amend the land use and development code to remain in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program administered as sponsored.
Public hearing number five is now open. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed.
Proposed order twenty four ninety eight. Order that the town council amend the land use and development code to remain in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program as recommended by the planning board. Due to the size of the ordinance amendments, it is included in material, meeting materials as a standalone document.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilor Lavoie. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Pratt.
I can give Tom a break. Thank you, Madam Chair. Essentially what this is, is in order for residents in Gorham to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and buy flood insurance, Gorham needs to have its ordinance in compliance. The maps in the ordinance language was going through a FEMA review process and appeal process for a couple of years now, right, Tom?
I'm going to say, it's probably been like a decade now.
Yeah. And a lot of challenge, more focused on the coastal communities, so essentially what this does is it's, it's language that brings our ordinance into compliance that allow, and then in turn, individuals can buy insurance through the program in Gorham. We don't have a ton of people buying, I think it was half a dozen.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it was nine, I think.
Nine.
Eight or nine, yeah.
Policies currently in Gorham, so this allows those policies to continue.
Any discussion, questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Six yeas.
Item 2022 twelve dash seven. Action to consider providing a framework for the review and possible revisions to the Chick Master Plan, Capital Improvements Committee sponsored. Proposed order twenty four dash ninety nine. Order that the town council accepts a recommendation of the Capital Improvements Committee to supplement the master plan for the Chick property with potential school development overlays to better inform future development plans as follows.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Councilor Wilder Cross. Is there a second? Councilor Sims? All right. So this came from Capital Improvements Committee. I don't know if anyone wants to speak on the item from the committee or town manager.
Well, go ahead. You'll get better job than I will.
I doubt that. Thank you. So this item was referred to the Capital Improvements Committee a while ago, over a year ago now, and the committee was tasked with looking at the master plan for the Chick property. One of the components that the committee recommended back was essentially highlighting that the Chick property could be used for educational purposes down the road. And it was discussed at length, but also I think acknowledged that if funding came down from the state for a high school or a new elementary school, this property could be developed for that purpose. Doesn't mean it's going to be, could be developed, so any future recreational investments in that property need to take into account that there is a risk associated with that. May never happen, may happen, but just on different parcels, but the more that we invest in the limited availability of land in Gorham, the more risk there is for having to change that in the future. So this would just be a supplement, if the council adopts it, to the Chick Master Plan. Not saying that the council can't do anything with the property, but it just highlights that there could be educational uses. Thank you.
The main discussion was to remind folks that might want to put lights on one of the fields or a snack shack or something like that, that they would be doing that at their own risk, an organization would be doing it at their own risk, knowing that, well, if we do, if that money does come out of the sky and we do decide to put one of our schools there, they'd be losing the money that they'd invested in those improvements. So it was really to protect people from, or to remind people that this, this land is, you know, our land, so to speak.
Thank you. Councilor Lavoie?
That, that puts my mind at ease, Councilor Cross, but the only thing I have an issue with is that the map as we see it does not, it, it needs to be zoomed out. It doesn't, it's, it's cropped, so we don't know where the high school ends or that multipurpose field ends. I mean, it's, it's minor, but I really do feel like it should be, town boundaries should be delineated.
It's a really small multipurpose field right now, is what it is.
I think it's a shuffleboard or something like that.
Yeah. I don't know if we can change it at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, that being said, the town engineer could just zoom out in the AutoCAD and modify that. I just recommend, if you want to approve it, approve it, and we'll just make that change. That's a simple, essentially just make sure the whole parcel is in the boundary and frame.
And we're literally just approving a hypothetical basically tonight, correct? This isn't locking this parcel in stone.
I have yet, I have yet to find the money for the new hypothetical high school, but if we find it, I will let you know.
Right.
And this is just one of the places that it might go.
Right. So we're just targeting an area, is all we're doing tonight.
Right, as Councilor Cross indicated, mostly to be able to give people fair warning.
Yeah, okay.
These groups that might want to like do something to these fields existing, just know, it's possible we might have to ask you to remove that. We're going to remove it and build the school here potentially.
You're right.
It may end up going somewhere else, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I appreciate it. The committee took this up. It was one of the things like, when the skate park went in, which is great, we just noticed that the plan had, obviously needed to be updated. We had put things and moved portables and done all kinds of things, so I appreciate all the work and the discussions that were had. And obviously, you know, the new high school is, may not look like that, so yeah, it's not set in stone, but I appreciate the work the committee did, so thank you. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Six yeas.
Item 2024 seven dash four. Action to consider amending the land use and development code to allow for more dogs to be allowed in kennel in the rural district, Councilor Segal sponsored. Proposed order twenty four one hundred. Order that the town council forwards to the ordinance committee for review and recommendation, increase the number of allowed dogs in a kennel from the current maximum of ten to a higher number.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilor Segal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Sims. All right. Councilor Segal.
Thank you. To the council, I was just, I was approached by someone looking to open a business in Gorham, which I know we really want to focus on opening more businesses here, and they were having issue with the amount of dogs that would be allowed, was not really sustainable. They live on an incredibly large parcel in the rural district, and so my thought is that the ordinance committee could make a small change, allowing for a larger number of dogs, but for very, very, very large lots in the rural district, so this has not become an issue all over the place and would only be in places where you'd really, really never hear them. So I thought for the purposes of helping out a small business owner, we can make this tiny change.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Pratt, go ahead.
So I received the same phone call probably a year and a half, two years ago, and I basically said no, and here's my reasoning for it, was they were asking for a hundred-plus dog kennel at the time, and while yes, it's a very large parcel of property, a hundred-plus dogs make an extreme amount of noise, basically. I have, it's not a kennel per se, but it's a fenced-in area down the road from me that's half a mile. They have three dogs in it, and it's all you can hear in the summertime, basically. I'm all for looking at the standards, but if it gets set at a hundred-plus dogs, I will be completely against it, just so you know. I'm just forewarning everyone ahead of time, we really need to do our due diligence. It seems fair, it seems equitable, it seems like a good business opportunity, but there are a lot of standards that need to be put in place for the amount of animals, if this is the same one, which I'm thinking it is. We really need to do our due diligence on this if it's going to get approved, so, yeah.
Councilor Sims?
Yeah, I'd agree with that, and I was, my question was just gonna be, do we have some sort of ballpark as to what the current limit is and, and what we're talking about? I mean, I think, I'm, I'm comfortable with letting the ordinance committee discuss it, but I also, you know, when it comes to businesses, we want more businesses because we want more property tax revenue. I don't see a kennel, regardless of how many more dogs we let them have, unless, I don't know what we're charging for a dog license, but I don't know if that's gonna get us the outcome we're looking for, but.
And it doesn't count as personal property either, so we're out on that.
Councillor Lavoie?
Yeah, the current ordinance says ten dogs on three acres. I would just urge that the ordinance committee look at surrounding communities and what the current standards are in other communities so that we're somewhat in line with them, that's all.
I believe we, at one point recently, and the town manager might remember this, we did a contract zone for someone who wanted more dogs in a kennel, and we did a contract zone specifically because we looked at the surrounding area, we looked at, you know, how would this affect anyone, and then we set the amount of dogs, I think, in that, based on how close the buildings and what the trees looked like and things like that, so that was a little bit more specific. So just keep that in mind, I guess, for the ordinance committee, because you'd be setting the standard for all the rural districts. So if suddenly fifty people wanted to come in and have a dog kennel, just keep that in mind, the precedent, that's all.
So, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Item 2022-8-2, action to consider adopting a fee schedule for the pedestrian overlay district administered. Proposed order 24-101, order that the town council approve a fee schedule for the new pedestrian overlay district as follows. Commercial construction sidewalk fee is based on the following square footage. Zero to five thousand feet, five thousand dollars. Five thousand feet to ten thousand feet, seventy-five hundred dollars. Ten thousand feet is seventy-five hundred dollars plus seven hundred dollars for every thousand foot or portion thereof over ten thousand feet. Commercial fee is capped at hundred thousand dollars regardless of facility size. Residential construction sidewalk fee is based on the number of proposed units per the following schedule. Fee is twenty-five hundred dollars per allowable unit. Residential fee is capped at five hundred thousand dollars regardless of number of units.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by councillor Lavoie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up to the pedestrian overlay district that the council adopted and modified, updating and/or, I guess, adding the fee structure to that. Tom can speak to the specifics on how it's calculated and how it applies in certain situations. I don't know if the council has any questions on that.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, oh, I do.
What process, I guess just for the public, what process did this go through to come up with this fee structure? Did this go to finance? Did it go to ordinance? Did it go to both?
The fee schedule was reviewed at the ordinance committee and at the planning board, and what came up from the town engineer when we're looking at the extension of sidewalk costs for sidewalks, and then what was kind of, we looked at how much sidewalk you could get per foot of sidewalk construction costs, and then identify what was a fair rate for commercial businesses and what was a fair rate for residential development. So that's how that came about.
Okay, and then, I guess, follow-up question to that. Can, we're coming up with this fee structure to be more fair, right? But can sidewalks be waived in certain instances by the planning board?
So if you remember the, this new ordinance only applies to the pedestrian overlay district, so those areas that don't apply to it, don't have to worry about it. They don't pay anything. So that, really, we focused it down to payment of a fee in those circumstances where sidewalk extension exceeds a certain cost. So if you're on the road and the sidewalk's like half a mile away, and that commercial business has to do a sidewalk, it didn't make sense to, for him to build a sidewalk. Just pay the fee and then we, we'll use that money to pull revenue and resources together to make it more equitable.
So this is a more business-friendly approach, is what you're trying to tell me right now. Thank you.
Correct.
See that low-hanging fruit I'm throwing you there? Okay, perfect. So, so this only applies to the pedestrian overlay district?
Correct.
And it's a way that, like you just said, if somebody was required to do a mile of sidewalk, they can pay a fee instead?
Correct. Like a smaller business, like if, if someone's coming in with a five thousand square foot business, they only have to pay the fee that, they don't have to worry about building the sidewalk on the road to get it to their, their facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sims?
Thank you. The, I, do we have a sense of, I don't know how much a sidewalk costs? Is this, how close is this to the cost of the sidewalk? Is it, are people gonna be like, sweet, I'm, I'm gonna, it would have cost me twenty thousand dollars to build a sidewalk, and now I only have to pay five thousand, so I'm gonna not build a sidewalk?
I think, so, for the site plan, so there's, there's two costs. One is for residential and the other one is for commercial. I think for commercial, I think it's pretty fair, because you figure a five thousand square foot building is pretty small with the site work, right? So we didn't want to encumber those smaller businesses that are locating in town or maybe making the first step, incubator spaces, that kind of stuff with a bigger cost. So is the fee a little bit lower there? Potentially, but it's because those are new businesses and smaller ones. I think the bigger ones is appropriate, and I think residential is pretty appropriate. We, we capped it at five hundred thousand. Most, most residential developments would need to extend sidewalk. I think this just allows provisions that if it's exceedingly long, it doesn't make sense that we just encumber that cost, so.
One, one follow-up question, that might just be for consideration for the future. A small business in the situation you described, by all means, I want to find ways for us to make it easier for those businesses to locate here. Does our current revolving loan fund allow a business to borrow money to do something like this?
I would say like a small business, if there was gap financing they need or assistance, that's what it's for, right? So whether it's a sidewalk or paying a fee or whatever it is, I think they can use those funds to give them flexibility to do other things on the lot.
I mean, one thing we might want to think about, we could try to get creative, like particularly if they needed some additional money simply for these specific town improvements that we want to see happen, like maybe we could have the loan, the, the loan fund be like a lower interest rate and even more flexible, just to like make it, make it more possible for the business to actually build the sidewalk and still do the, do the, do the business. But something to consider for the, for the future.
And the other thing I would say for the council, this is a fee schedule, it doesn't need to go to planning board, so if you ever want to adjust this, it's just a council action. So it's, it's just like any other fees you, you adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think one question that didn't get answered was the cost of sidewalks. So this is more or less a drop in the bucket. Sidewalks cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to construct. You may not think that, they do, because they usually require drainage and curbing and concrete in some places. The sidewalk that ran up and down Narragansett that we just installed in the last two years, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, where this comes into play is we can leverage this money for other money that's out there, PAX money or grant money and things like that, and then, and then town funds. So I just want to emphasize that the five thousand dollars that a small business contributes to this is not going to create three hundred feet or five hundred feet of sidewalk. It's, it's adding to the system and adding to the network.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the planning board decide, or does the developer decide whether they're gonna build the sidewalk or do the in-loo fee?
It would be the town identifying in that pedestrian overlay district. So if we have identified, just for example, portions of South Street that don't have a sidewalk, that is gonna need a sidewalk, that's, it's gonna be the town deciding. So as developments, say, way down on Lower South Street, it's in the pedestrian overlay district, there is two miles of no sidewalk, the town's gonna decide to put that sidewalk there, and those funds will go to extending that sidewalk. It's the, the council identified where that sidewalk network was gonna be as part of the pedestrian overlay district.
Right, sorry. What I'm saying is, if something is being built in the pedestrian overlay district, and this is an in-loe fee, who decides whether the in-loe fee is paid or whether the sidewalk is just built by the developer? Is it the planning board that ultimately determines, or it's the developer?
It will be the overlay district stands, I believe it tells you when, when they can go in-loe fee or have to construct the sidewalk.
Got it. So if it's overly, overly burdensome, similar to our extending water waiver. Okay, understood. And then my other question is, the way this is currently written for residential, it says per allowable unit. Does that mean that, so a single-family home on one lot would be twenty-five hundred? If it were a quadplex built on the same lot, so four units, would that one cost ten thousand, even though it's the same-sized lot?
The way I read that is max density in the lot. So if the max density in a lot says this lot can get twenty units, that's what they would pay, even if they were only doing ten.
Got it.
So to me, it's allowable units. If we're allowing you twenty, that's what you're paying your fee on. Whether you move forward with ten or six, that's the developer's choice, but you're paying the fee as on allowable units.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Six yeas.
Item 2024-7-5, action to go into executive session for personnel and economic development matters administered. Proposed order 24-102, order that the town council enter into executive session pursuant to order 2389-1 MRS-A4056A, Personnel Matters and 1 MRS-A4056C, for discussion or consideration of the condition, acquisition, or the use of real personal property permanently attached to real property or interests therein, or disposition of publicity, publicly held property or economic development, only if premature disclosures of the information would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the party or agent.
So moved. All right, made by councillor Wildercross.
Second.
Second by councillor Segal. All those in favor? Six yeas. And just for the public, we are not gonna take any votes when we come out of executive session, so we'll just adjourn after we're done. We won't be coming back.